This is the February 8th hearing of the ZBA. We have the agenda, I've got it down here. Anyways, we've got, we're calling this to order. We've got Kyle Bache alternate, he's acting as a voting member tonight in place of Pete Broderick, who has resigned now. Robin Carter, planning administrator. I'm Peter Coffin, Chair. Megan Kelly, Vice Chair. Rick Russman, Member. And Shaw Tilton, Member. The first item up is the December 14th minutes. And I will, I will make the motion to accept with the following changes, and I will accept other changes as we go through these. Line 40, put a period after the word setbacks. Line 41, I've given these to Robin. Most of these lake houses were built as summer cottages. It's, it's a clarification of a sentence there. Lines 54 and 55, waivers for pre-existing non-conforming lots of record. It was missing a word or two. 65, we added the word "we" to expanded, and "we" are talking about the use being expanded. So, we added the word "we." 177, neighbors standpoint, we are adding the words "if the variance was denied," because we start, if it was a conditional sentence, startup would be, and then it needs the "if" statement that was missing. And that was it. Any other changes that anybody saw that needed to go? Okay. We accept a second.
A second.
Second by Shaw. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any abstentions? One abstention, you weren't here, you don't, by the way, don't have to abstain, but Megan's abstaining. And Rick, you voted yes? Did you vote yes? Okay. So, it's four, zero, and one. Okay. The second item on the agenda was making a determination of development of regional impact for Liberty Commons LLC project. We got this application in on the deadline of March, I mean, January 18th, I think it was, and there was insufficient time to call a meeting, special meeting, just to make a DRI determination, and still get the notifications out that are required by law, RSA 3657, to the members that would are affected. The applicant, I think you all saw the email, the applicant, sorry, this wasn't part of it, had agreed that they would volunteer themselves as a, they would agree to be a development of regional impact, and notifications were sent out to East Kingston and Newton, and to the RPC. We did get clarification from the New Hampshire Municipal Association Legal Inquiry's office about whether an application for variances, where the variances didn't affect the other towns, but the development did, the, whether a determination of regional impact would be made based on the development or on the variances, and as is stated in the RSAs, it has to be based on whether the development as a whole has regional impact. And thus, that's why those notifications were sent out. However, the requirement of the DRI RSA also requires that the minutes from this meeting be sent to the two towns and the RPC within five days. So, the bottom line is, we need to make a determination of regional impact, and... Bring that up. You said it's in the paper, right? So, this is not part of a hearing. This is just a determination made at a meeting. So, this is for the lots that are listed in the worksheet that will be combined together to perform this project that's completed. And the, the factors that we're using to determine regional impact, the first one is relative size or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock. And the, how many, how many units were there?
I thought it was 38 duplexes and six apartment buildings.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Is it okay for us to go forward with this decision on the development of regional impact without the applicant being here?
Oh, yes. Yes. In fact, the applicants aren't normally at the DRI, because it's supposed to be at a meeting before the hearing. And we'll also get into, we'll get into why the applicant's not here anyway, because they've requested a continuance. But, but this, this is something, we would not accept input on this from the applicant, although we've already received input that they, they believe that this, this applies. So, the, that's right. That's what I was missing, was my little note worksheet where I wrote down how many units there were. I think there was something like 158 parking spaces, so, being required. Anyway, there's a 19 unit building. Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. 35 apartment bedrooms plus 33 apartments, two bedrooms. So, 35 and 33 is 68 plus 38 duplex, which is, oh, here it is. 200 and, is that 335 bedrooms?
255.
55, yeah. So, that gives you an idea of scope of the project. It is by Kingston standards, I think, the biggest housing project that has been proposed. And Rick's going here long as you tell me. I think that, I can't think of any place that would have more housing units. And so, I would think that it qualifies under relative size and, or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock. It's Kingston's, what, over 6,000 people, and so, this would be, I think this would qualify, it's my opinion, this qualifies as a regional impact because of the number dwelling units as compared with existing stock. So, anybody want to weigh in on that?
I concur. That's a large project.
Concur or disagree?
Yeah.
I'm just, I, this is a discussion item, so, we can take a vote on that. How many people feel that it qualifies under number one, relative size or number of dwelling units? I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that's five right there. Proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, and this is something that I can bring up, I did a check on GIS, which I can show you here.
It is, the closest point to the East Kingston line is 600 feet, which...
According to the Rockingham County Planning Commission, anything within 1,000, 1,000 feet would qualify.
Right. So, I'm going to bring up a measuring tool.
For residential.
Lot 2. Anyway, it's just, just a hair under, I'm not sure why this isn't working. Ah, here it goes. 599 feet between lot 2 and the East Kingston bound border. So, that, as you said, is...
Yeah. Under the Rockingham Planning Commission, these are not binding, but their guidance is that if we look at C under their first criteria, first criteria, the proposed development may be significantly affect the economic structure of the neighboring communities by D would be resulting in the construction of 50 or more residential units where any portion of the development is within 1,000 feet of municipal boundary.
Okay. So, all those who feel that this project qualifies for regional impact under item 2, proximity to the borders at 600 feet, and that would be the town of East Kingston would be affected by that. Okay, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, that's five and zero. Transportation networks. I don't think this, this does have an impact on transportation networks, but Kingston is, really doesn't have a regional transportation network. Coast doesn't come down to us, it's, I don't think it's, you know, obviously, we're talking about 125, which this will empty out on from Depot Road. I don't think there's a significant impact compared to some of these other projects along 125. So, I would, I would say that it doesn't qualify under transportation networks. Any disagreement?
I would agree with that.
Under the planning board minutes, I read that they hired their own traffic study.
Yes. And that would be something that...
They said it was very important to them. They did not check the traffic.
Right. They're required to do a traffic study and reduce it, and a lot of that has to do with the way it comes out of Depot Road.
Which is a state road, correct? Not a town road.
Depot Road is...
It's 107.
Is it Depot?
Depot Road is 107?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm getting it. So, it does empty onto a state, state road.
State road, yeah. Oh, boy.
So...
I'm thinking of New Boston. I was more south of New. It is, it could, it, this would be one of those areas of doubt. The traffic study hasn't been done yet. It could have some impact. I don't think we'd necessarily determine it. I think we have other determining factors, but I, in terms of what towns other than Kingston would be affected by that, but it's a regional impact. Again, East Kingston would be the only one I can think of, because Depot Road heads over to East Kingston. So, I suppose I could go as backlog there. So, I don't know, what's your, how do you feel about it?
Well, 250 cars a day coming out on the road, fair amount, but I, I think it...
I think the 250 cars a day coming out on the road is certainly not insignificant, but I don't think it rises to make it a significant impact on Depot Road there. I mean, it's...
Where it's close to the light, then getting, the easier than getting out onto the road and then having a light right there feels...
How would it affect the people in, in East Kingston? And...
It's already a through road.
Well, that's true. So, again, I'm just going off of this, again, guidance, but under the Rockingham Planning Commission, they have on a statutory authority page, there's just a question about traffic generation. Will the project generate more than 500 vehicle trips per day as a question, which it probably would at 255 units, in and out is...
255 bedrooms.
Bedrooms, sorry. Yep, sorry. That's true. Yep.
Yeah. Did you say there was somewhere a number of parking spaces listed?
There's 506 parking spots.
506?
Thank you. Yeah.
We shouldn't be talking about 255, we're talking about 506.
506. So, I think that's...
That's a lot of cars.
That's a lot of cars, and I don't know what the computation is. I, I would not, I would say that, my recommendation on that would be it's indeterminate, and so, given the guidelines for regional impact determination, I would say that would, that could have an impact on East Kingston.
I was under the, I was under the impression that if we, if there was a question whether it was or was not, that we were supposed to come down on the side of the fact that it is.
Saying if it's indeterminate, then we would err on yes.
That's what I said. Indeterminate, so I would say that there's potential impact. I would say that's potential. So, do we have, how many people feel there's a potential impact for transportation? Okay. Potential's five and O. Anticipated emissions, light, noise, smoke, odors, or particles. I'm going to say that I can't see a housing development that's having those particular I'm thinking the biggest impact would be septic. What's that?
Yeah, on another town.
On another town. And we'll get to the next one. So, I would say, in my opinion, that's not a reason for regional impact. Any disagreement?
I agree with you. I don't think...
Is there any guidance from the Rockingham Planning Commission on that, Shaw?
They have visual impacts, they have pollution, which could be air, wastewater, discharge noise, or hazardous waste. Does it propose operation of a facility or business? Doesn't it say residential? There's infrastructure, right? Land use.
Well, what do you think? You think potential?
I think there is a fair amount of, going to be a fair amount of light generated there with...
Especially when there's an overcast, you'll get reflected light.
Right, or at night, and certainly with that many cars, there's going to certainly be some noise and...
Right. That's, that's one of the things the planning board will have to look at, is making sure that night sky compliant, lighting systems and stuff. But, we can just say, there's, this, these one, we don't have to vote on like variance items individually, we can say there's a potential. All right, is everybody comfortable with that? Because we're going to vote on, on the impact, whether, as a, as a whole. So, the next one, number five, is the one that is proximity to aqua or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries. And if you look at our, I think, an aquifer map, number two...
Most of it's on...
It's, it's in a zone B aquifer that, once that aquifer goes down south of Depot Road, it transitions over to East Kingston. So, that, that is a shared aquifer with East Kingston. These are the lots here, I don't know, but R29, if you want to come up and take a look at the aquifer zone map.
Oh, it's actually on, it's on here, too. So, there's the limit of aquifer protection zone is traced around here.
Right. But, I don't know which limit that is. This, you can see where the aquifer itself goes across into East Kingston.
Yeah.
At, at this whole area in R27 and R28. So, the project being here, it's in this aquifer that goes into East Kingston, in a very close way. So, my opinion is there's, proximity aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries. Again, East Kingston would be the affected town. Anybody have a different opinion?
No, I would, of all of them, that was one of my most determining factors was that.
Right. So, not hearing anybody, no objections to that, we'll just say that that was, that is a factor. The final one is shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities. We do not share a solid waste disposal facility with another regional town, at least not directly. However, we do have a two-town school district, and Newton is the other town, and by adding bedrooms, it is likely to, especially since it's not a nature restricted community or anything, it's likely to have an impact on the school district.
Do you have a question about the school?
Yeah.
Do we know for sure whether the Fremont students are going to be with Kingston this year or this coming year or not? They're out.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we know how many students that is?
One-third of the high school population.
You know, it's 30% of the budget, I know that.
Okay. So, is it going to be impacted in...
I would say it's likely to be a positive, it would be, likely to be a positive impact, because that's one of the complaints, was the school was overbuilt, which is why they moved middle school up there, or at least this junior high school portion. But, regardless, it has an impact one way or the other, and they should be alerted as to the fact that this large is changing. Housing project is proposed and have some input, because, you know, a lot of people think, well, you know, more kids means more money, but in fact, it could mean that you start getting enough...
Hire students to teach ratios.
Yeah, you start getting enough to avoid layoffs of a teaching staff because of insufficient student population to support this, and your cost per student goes up. So, you know, it doesn't say negative impact or positive impact, it just says an impact. So, I'm proposing that that qualifies, unless I hear any differing opinion, I'll just write that down as, as one of the impact items. And that case, that was the only one where I felt Newton was affected, and it wouldn't affect East Kingston. So, the bottom line is, we take a vote on whether this is a development of regional impact. And all those who say yes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's five and zero, so, there's no abstentions, no negatives. So, the next thing that has to be done is, the minutes have to be sent out to Newton, East Kingston, and RPC, along with the fact that the hearing will be held. Yeah, and because they, all those three got noticed, because the applicant was proactive and concluded notification for those three entities initially, they could be here tonight, but they'll get a notification anyway, because we have to send certified mail by the minutes. So, that brings up our next issue, which is that the applicant, due to sickness in the family, whatever, has requested a continuation to March 16th, and...
14th?
Sorry, 14th, yeah, March 14th, thank you. And it also, because of our requirement for compliance with RSA 3657, we would need to continue this hearing anyway. We'd need a motion to continue the hearing at the applicant's request. Is that...
I will make a motion to continue the hearing at the applicant's request.
To...
To March 14th, at 7:00 PM, here at the town hall.
7:00 PM, here at town hall. So, that's a time and place certain. So, a second? Second by Shaw. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous? And on the minutes, you can just say the review of all these categories, and just where we, where we did make determinations, you can list the reasons. So, we've got the minutes done, we've got the determination of regional impact done, we have got the continuants done. Often, the town council at one point suggested that we open the hearing and then continue it, but in this case, we can't even open the hearing, so we can just do a continuation. It has the same effect.
Yeah. I don't know if we need to open the hearing as to whether or not anybody else has something to say.
That's a good point. Are you here for the Liberty Commons hearing?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So, because you would have received either a butter notification, you both did. Okay. So, you will not receive a second to butter notification. This will be posted as an agenda, but it won't be posted in the newspaper, and it won't go, you won't get anything in the mail. So, you're notified that this hearing has been continued to March 14th at 7:00 PM here. And I think you've probably heard the reasons why, and I'm sure any input will be accepted and welcome. So, appreciate your coming up, coming around to the meeting. Is there any other kind of business to come before the board?
Yes, I just want to thank Robin for putting this together.
Oh, yes.
I assume you did that.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. That's really helpful.
Yeah, it's a really good organization.
Yes.
Ah, thank you. That was the, um, two.
That was what that was, applications. So...
This was something that we, because we're making it slightly less stringent, what was happening, the application deadline was Wednesday, and it's human nature, people wait till the last second to bring in the application. But, Wednesday is the one day a week that there's nobody in the planning office, so there's nobody to answer questions when they bring it in, or to review it.
You can drop it off, or do something.
You can drop it off, but they don't get told, oh, by the way, you didn't fill out section D, you know? So, Robin had suggested, why not make it Thursday? She's in the office, and she can review it, and even if she's not there in the morning, take a look at, you know, somebody comes in in the afternoon and say, you know, what is this? And tell me about it, and do you have all the information you need, or whatever. It certainly makes sense. We do need to change our rules and procedures, which has to be done by a system of...
Agenda.
On agenda, and then, and there's something else, we're going to have some other changes probably to make to it, but in the meantime, however, people, we can change it, post it on the, on the website, so that when people see that...
We'll accept it on the Thursday.
We'll accept it on the Thursday. This is actually, de facto is what's been happening, probably ever since you've been...
That's when I've been receiving it. It's been delivered on Wednesday, but Tori's been getting it, yeah.
Yeah, Tori's been getting it. Or occasionally, we, like Glenn has told somebody at one point, and I know that they could have till Thursday, because nobody would be here to get it on Wednesday anyway. So, and it was like a last minute thing, and people, planning board and stuff.
So, until it gets noticed for next meeting, we'll just...
We'll, yeah, we won't change our rules and procedures until we have...
Unofficially letting people turn it in on Thursday instead.
And that's compliance with our, the way we have been doing business. And that's compliance with our, the way we have been doing business. It does say no exceptions, but if we change it on the website.
And make it official at the next meeting.
And we can make it official the next meeting, so we should probably put it on the agenda for the next meeting that.
How come it can't be official tonight?
It has to be notified to.
Changes in the rules, our rules and procedures, it has to be.
Well, it's been posted on the agenda. It's been posted online, I think.
I mean, is that a sufficient posting of a possible change?
I have that copy with me right now.
Or you think more, more information?
Maybe. I don't know. What do you think, Peter? Is having it on here as board business?
Oh, here, thank you. No, I'm not, that's the rules and procedures. Look at, see what it actually says, since it was based on state rates.
Just give me one second.
Yeah.
If you didn't ask me, we're not.
Okay, I'm trying to think if I.
Can we page it on?
It's not there, it's on their rules and procedures.
It's on the ZVA rules and procedures, and that is in a file that is on my home computer. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Oh, yeah. Bylaw revisions. These bylaws may be revised by first posting such revisions, along with the usual monthly postings of agenda and business, followed by majority vote of the members present at a regular monthly meeting. Minor textual changes from the posting may be made at the meeting. From, changes from the posting may be made at the meeting, so posting such revisions, along with the usual nothing.
So we didn't post a detail of the submission deadline, we just said.
Yeah, we were discussing.
Yeah.
Was that a minor change in language?
I, well, it's a deadline.
Right? We were discussing the deadline.
Yeah. I think we, we can make that, I think we can make the change and post it online, and the final posting, we won't actually make the change, we can, we can maybe revote on it next, next month, it's just a.
I think we should, I think we could vote on it now, if it, if we were discussing that this application submission deadline, and the minor change to wording at the meeting was what day we were changing it to.
Yeah.
I don't see why we can't vote on it and implement it.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think, I'm trying to read too much into that. So all those in favor of changing the application deadline from Wednesday to Thursday, say aye.
Aye.
So be it. And the change will be effective in the next edition of that rules and procedures, but in the meantime, it'll be posted, the correct date will be posted online.
Sort of aligned, sorry, is that finished?
Yeah, I just was going to say, in your master copy of the rules and procedures, you can make the, make a total change and then, yeah, repost it.
I was just sort of tangentially aligned, aligned, I was wondering, do we have the ability to set a timeline for when people can submit documents for the actual meetings? Because, you know, we often are getting them up till 6:00 or, you know, just before.
They were coming in.
And to say, if it's not received by.
Yeah, the planning board has a different deadline, but.
Yeah, noon.
We do?
I think it says noon by Wednesday on the website. I think so.
For, well, if we've already opened the hearing, let's say we continued it, and I think this is what you're talking about, when we've had documents come back, and then they've responded to them, and what's on here is, is they could just bring the responses to the meeting. We've gotten them sometimes to read, and we could say, well, we don't, didn't have time to read that, so, you know, continue it again, or whatever, but.
I guess I'm curious.
Are you referring to original document, that it should be included in the packet, or?
Anything that we're supposed to be considering, I guess, you know.
So they're supposed to have anything with their initial application in by noon now, Thursday before the meeting, or on that?
No, it's three, it's the third Thursday now, prior, of the month, prior to the meeting month. Now, this happened to be a March 8th meeting, is the, the 8th is the earliest in the month you can have a meeting on a second Thursday. So that was, that was part of the problem with this whole, you know, we didn't have time to conduct a meeting.
Totally, yeah. I'm less concerned about that, I think I'm more interested in the follow-up. Let's say we're saying, we, the board requests that the information on what did the police department think, or the fire department think, or we're getting some feedback, or they're having an additional thing that we've requested them before we make a decision, and we get the document, or a subsequent document, like we had previously, that is at, you know, 6:00, we're getting emails.
Yeah, I think you're right, we should have a limit, and we can state that for these, for the follow-up ones.
Right.
We can say, we're continuous to next month, with the understanding that you must get any changes to us a week prior, for example. And then they, then Robin can send them. Is that suitable?
Yeah, I mean, I think anything is better than an hour before one.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So, but, so, yeah, I mean, 24, 48, you know, 72, I mean, a week, something where there's a chance to read and process the information, that's all I'm wanting a chance to do.
And like Peter said, right now, the way it's set up, if there's a response to something that's already been submitted, it can be given to us, like, as someone sitting down at the meeting right now, and presented as part of the meeting.
Correct, right, so the illness isn't on.
Takes a lot to digest that.
Sure does, absolutely, you know, but.
You can't.
True, yeah.
Yeah, on these larger reports, yeah, where you need interpretation, so, yeah.
I think particularly so, because if the party is trying to build a record, so-called, it puts us at a distinct disadvantage, not to have the opportunity to review those things well in advance.
It's a disservice to the town as representatives of the town.
Right, and it also distorts the record, if you will, as far as what it may or may not say in our response to it. So I think, in all fairness, to us to do our job, we do need it probably a week in advance, and they shouldn't come in, like you say, that night or something, and expect that, give it to us and expect we're going to consider it.
So in the interim, until we make a change to the procedures, we can designate, if we're continuing a hearing and we're requesting additional material, we can say that you'll need to get that to us one week or two weeks per, like the planning board, maybe 10 days. They have some different requirements, because, for example, if they change, come in with new plans, those plans then have to go to the town engineer, and planner, and department heads for review, and they need time to review it before the meeting at the planning board. So there's a, what is the requirement for the lead time? When we do those continuations?
It's about 10 days.
10 days, I think, yeah.
It's like the Thursday, then we have a week, and then the next Tuesday.
Yeah, so we're always setting, you know, saying, continuing this to March 14th, with all plans and changes due by, by March 7th.
I mean, do we also have currently the ability to say, more things are given to us the night of a meeting, that we reserve the right to continue this meeting to review the new responses?
Oh, yeah, 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 intervention review time, and I think that was the point the attorneys were making at the gas station issue, was that they didn't have time to review the additional information, even though, you know, they've gone to town engineer, and then the town engineer's submitted response, and they responded to the town engineer.
Right, no one did anything wrong, it just, it's how it's set up right now, and it's not ideal.
Yeah, yeah.
Would really like to change that, whatever way we do that, whether we're stating that verbally, or we're putting that in, like, the planning board, some form of that.
Okay, I think we, can we vote on that as a policy, seven days or 10 days? What do you, what would you like?
Seven days is adequate, I would think, and it should be memorialized in writing, so that everybody's on notice.
And that will be, have to be something that we put on the agenda for changing the rules, our rules and regulations. To March, which could be a busy time, but, I'm sorry. But if you can remember to put that on, to vote on that in March, and to post it on the agenda as change the requirement for materials to seven days prior.
Well, what is the planning board's submission deadline? Do you say 10 days?
They have actually, that's for when you're continuing.
Yeah, I was thinking about keeping it consistent between all the boards. Like ZVA is seven days, planning boards 10 days.
That wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know what I mean, that'd be more simple.
Then they don't have to remember date, they just, it gets consistent.
Put it for 10 days, and then. Or double-check if it's the planning board's, make sure it's the same.
Whatever they have.
But they have a longer lead time, I think, on their applications, or does it not?
No, it's the same.
It's the same.
Both about 21 days. So, we see the application.
Yeah, that has to do with noticing. By the way, for those of you who have BOS meetings or whatever, the, as you know, we lost the Carriage Town News. The planning board is not required to post notices in newspapers, they can use the website. State legislature, when they made these rules, forgot about zoning wards, so they have one on to correct that, and allow zoning wards to do post on websites instead of on the newspaper. That hasn't happened yet. Robin, three research, and we discovered that the Manchester Union Leader is the only paper of general circulation that covered Kingston and.
The Eagle Tribune is picking up local things happening in our region, according to they posted, I saw, but, I don't, they haven't done it yet.
But they, they don't list, yeah, Kingston as being in their coverage area.
At this moment.
Right, but they also, for some reason, were twice as expensive as the union leader. So the Board of Selectmen voted to make the union leader the paper of circulation. And with any luck, that rule, that rule would have ended sometime this year, that requirement, and we'll be able to post it online. Yeah, and there's rules about posting online, it's got to be on the homepage of the town's website, and prominent, and stuff like that, but we'll comply with all that when it comes, but we can't, we can't change our rules now. What we will do is, we'll change the reference to the CTN and the rules and procedures as being the preferred publication, but it doesn't say Carriage Town News, it says. It says a paper freely distributed to all households in Kingston. We'd be given preference. That doesn't exist anymore. So no rush, that can be done after those rules changed. We have alternatives. All right, any other business? All right, hearing, oh, I do have one other thing. You, I, and Kyle, Shaw, me and Kyle are the only ones running for our respective positions. So the next meeting is two days after elections. If we are unopposed, there's, nobody else gets votes in there, we can go and, starting the next day, get sworn in, either Wednesday or Thursday, after the elections, start a meeting. If not, I don't think it's a big deal, as Megan was saying, you can, generally, in March, you continue with the existing court, because if, for example, it was a contested election, you wouldn't be able to get sworn in for seven days after the election, until it was certified, and appeal, give the loser a chance to appeal the decision, you know, and ask for a recount.
The only thing getting sworn in ahead of time would do would be to vote on decisions forward at March.
Right, and then again, if March is busy, no big deal. I mean, it might be, you know, no big deal, let's hold on to that. Do we have, we know we have, we won't, we just put in March, this big one. Do we have other applications that have come in so far, or you know?
No, but they have until the 16th.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have time, and we know.
Yeah, they have until, now they have till the 16th. I'll have to remark their calendar. I said now they have till the 16th, send in their application.
You have to redo your little beautiful color-coded deadline.
Oh, no, I did, I think, on Thursdays.
Oh, you did? I'm still used to looking at the sun ages.
I know, and that's the only format they had, so don't get messed up. I wish, so start to Monday, not Sunday, I see that now, thank you.
We know who's running the show.
Clearly. I'm glad it's her.
Yeah, and then we'll know whether, you know, Robin's position also at that time gets changed, right? So that would be, hopefully, for the town.
Yeah.
I know, we have some signs, oh, yes, on whatever.
And quite frankly, anything that you want to do in terms, as he's going to say, it limits the editors, but Facebook postings or anything else to support that, feel free, I think both Lynn and I are going to be submitting stuff, and I think it's, I'm not on Facebook, but it's going to have to probably go on one of the unofficial Facebook pages that, yeah.
I think it's a man's Facebook.
Okay, that's good, yeah.
I know, my biggest difficulty is not having to work weekends anymore. Right now, I have to work weekends, to make all this work, because I have a job.
Yeah, that.
Understood.
So we're trying to get you out of your job.
So it's a lot, very little social.
Any.
What do you mean?
So is there any other business? That was just, by the way, aside, I probably should wait until the meeting is over, but if there's no other business, we are adjourned.